Very positive result related to communication there. My ideas and suggestions count. Again, this is at a more local level. And as we move farther and farther away from the supervisor-employee relationship, the scores go down somewhat. With the breakdown by gender, we see males being more favorable to communication than The Equity Index includes items that are related to treatment on the job, if you will. Each of these has to do with basically how things are working at the work level as compared to the overarching organization in general. We see for the Equity Index by ethnicity, the favorability ratings move from 56.4% to 68.6%, with American Indian employees responding the least favorably. By gender, males are more positive than females. Looking at these items that are listed in the Equity Index, as you move away from the actual local, I'm going to call it workplace, where it's employee and supervisor, the favorability tends to drop somewhat. So that gives us some clues about what we should be looking at for improvement moving Next, I'm going to talk about benchmark information. We receive benchmark information from Perceptics, our partner organization, and they have provided us with an average of their clients. Their clients range a variety of industries and across geographies. These client companies are anywhere from 1,000 employees to over 100,000 employees. So as we look at these particular benchmark items, one of the things I would say is that these are not goals, they are simply a reference point that indicate perhaps a normal score, if you will. So we have several items in the benchmark information that are above the Perceptics benchmark. We can see where I work, I'm treated with dignity and respect. Of course, who wouldn't want to have a high score there? That's really great. And moving on, we see that there are several items that are in our top five that are above the Perceptics benchmark data. On the flip side, the items that are farthest below, where I work, at number 44, the fourth one down, we have enough people to get the work done. We're lower significantly than the benchmark and in honest two-way communication. So in summary, looking at the results by category, here are the categories sorted from high to low. We have several areas that we feel are very positive, and we have some areas that do This is a new report for us, the Quadrant Report, and what it does do is it helps us prioritize where to spend our focus as far as improvements are concerned. So what you see in this matrix is that the vertical axis is importance, the horizontal axis is evaluation or favorability average. So the items in the top left, excuse me, top right, are very important and very favorable. Those would be considered our strengths. Those items that are in opportunities are on the top left, so several items that we have some great opportunity to improve. We've combined here the two scales, so it's not only how did people rate it favorably, but how important was that particular category to them. What we see in the area of opportunities is communication index and teamwork and collaboration. Both the index and that particular category contain our lowest-rated item, which is open We've had some significant improvements since the 2014 survey, one of which, number 52, there is a promising future for me at the city. If you notice that it's significantly higher, there was an 8.5% increase since 2014. And the reason I'm particularly mentioning this item is that this is the one that the city took on as everybody to work on since in 2014. Everybody had some effort going on to improve this particular item. It shows when working together, we can make the needle move. This is a list of the survey items with the highest favorability, ranging from 78.1% to 82.3%. And of those items that were included in the 2014 survey, you can see that there were improvements made. The lowest-scoring items, this one, the range here is between 34.6% and 47.8%, and items 38 and 27 both went down since 2014. Again, there you see there is honest two-way communication, lowest-rated item in the survey. Now we're looking again at the opportunities. So we've talked about how we rate items both for favorability and importance. And in looking at this particular chart, what Perceptics has done with this tool is to identify what's the gap between how favorably something is rated and how important it is. And then they also weighted the importance. And the reason that this was done is frankly, it answers the question, what's the most pressing issue in my organization that has the most significant need for improvement and, if improved, promises to see the greatest reward? So it's a way to prioritize where we place our focus. And you can see, number 44, where I work, we have enough people to get the work done. There are a variety of different ways to approach that particular question, from identifying is all of the work that we're doing still a priority? Can we reprioritize those efforts? If we're working with seasonal staff, is there a better way to prepare? A variety of ways to think about can we be more efficient and more effective? Is there is honest two-way communication at the city? That question begs of employees, what information are they receiving that's valuable? What information are they not receiving? Where are they getting information? What information tools do they use? There's lots of ways to address that question as well. And then the third low-rated item in my department, all employees have equal opportunities for advancement. Again, we would have to take a look at how that's happening within the departments across the city and see if there's opportunities there that we can actually address. I'm going to turn it back to Chuck now for action planning.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. This particular flow chart is showing a model that was shared with us by our friends at Perceptics. And what it's trying to show is that there's external and internal factors that affect a person's perception about the city as an employer. Internally, if we have effective and engaging leaders, effective and engaging management, this all has an impact on how an employee experiences the city, resources, relationships, community factors, community relations, how people are treated in their day-to-day activities, working with the community. All this has an impact on the engagement index. And the engagement index has huge impact on employee retention, employee performance, and ultimately, success for not only the individual employee in the city, but also how our constituents, the residents, the businesses that choose to do business in the city, visitors to the city, and people that commute to the city every day for work. So the key questions to ask ourselves is what does the data tell us? Why does it matter? And what can and should be done? Action planning is easy, it was 1, 2, 3. Now, action planning is important, but it's also a place where a lot of people get stuck. So we want to move from action planning to actually action-doing. A simple approach is to select one item, to do two things about it, and to discuss it three times. This is just a simple approach. We need to look long-term and short-term. So what we've asked, based on all the information that we gleaned, based on our conversations with our consultant, we think the most important things that we can do as an organization is to work on a common strategy like Mary Lynn talked about last time we worked on, there's a promising future for me at the city. Through the efforts of departments, the city as a whole, we were able to push the needle on that one 8.5 points. Improving communication vertically across the organization, we can have huge impacts on multiple things within the survey. So we're asking all departments to work on this, as well as selecting an item or category to work on as a department that's unique or important to them. Now, these are goals. These may have been ambitious when we set them, but these were what was originally communicated. We asked departments to communicate the results to their employees and to try to have a selection of what they're going to work on by the end of February. And then to drive that change further, as we talk, the multi-sponsor model, working down divisions and work units. I think I mentioned this earlier, but managers and supervisors have unprecedented access to information this time. Any manager or supervisor who received five or more responses, either their direct reports or they have five or more people underneath in their span of control, have access to this Perceptics system. So we're asking not only departments, but also divisions and work units to select one item to work on. And we've asked those to be made by February 28th. But that's a goal, again, not a mandate. And also, we're asking departments to have a goal of action plans posted by March 31st. So this is the timeline. This really shows where we've been. The initial results were shared with the department heads back in December. Department heads were given access to the system also a couple days later. We did some webinars with managers and supervisors. They were relatively well-attended. We offered it four different times. Those were live. We haven't done anything like this before, or at least to this scale. The actual webinar that was done on January 11th has been posted on CityTalk, so employees or supervisors and managers can go back and use that as a reference. All those managers, over 200 managers and supervisors, were given access to the Perceptics system on January 6th. We've done a couple of Minneapolis manager articles, 11th and 25th, regarding the survey results at the city level. Departments are different, there are different places in sharing results with their staff, but I know that some departments have done that. Some departments are still working on that. We posted information about high-level results for all departments in the city on January 27th. So again, we're asking departments, or I visited the Board of Business Agents on February 9th and shared high-level city results with them. Similar information, not as much detail as you received this morning. And again, the February 28th and March 31st goals, and then March 8th, we're here today to present the information to you. And that really ends our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernardi. So I'll line up my little system here. Questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Gordon?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if this is going to be a matter that will be discussed at the advisory group for our unions and our, you know, how we have our managers' meetings? Has this come up with them? Business managers from all the unions meet with city leadership? Can't remember the name of the committee.
Councilmember Glidden, through the chair, Councilmember Gordon, I believe you're referring to the Labor Management Committee?
Thank you very much, yes.
And we would be glad to do that. I think some, maybe, Mary Lynn, was some, or information was already presented to them, I believe. But we'd be glad to go back.
I think that would be very useful. I'm also curious if council members have access to this on a department-level basis? It looks like department heads have access to it too, but I think it might be interesting to see how it varies from department to department. Is that something we can get?
Through the chair, Councilmember Gordon, there are high-level department results posted on CityTalk, and if there's specific information that you'd like about a department or departments, if you'd like to send me an email, I'd be glad to gather that information for you or any council member.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. I'm not seeing other comments. I actually just wanted to kind of go back to something you said at the very beginning, which I thought you were indicating, Mr. Bernardi, that this was a year where you're really trying to continue to focus on the supervisor-manager level. And I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about how that might happen through the action planning. So there's been a lot of focus, I agree, on just ensuring that kind of as a city, we own the fact we do a survey and we need to follow through on those suggestions we get from the surveys. And we've been increasingly focused on department heads and how they take that role seriously. And it sounds like you're bringing that down to increasing different levels of management within departments.
As Councilmember Glidden, members of the committee, yes. I had the opportunity to go through a change management model training, and it was offered by ProSci, and they're one of the leading organizations in change management training. And a lot of the training was focused on the importance of having a sponsor on making change happen, and not only from the executive level, the department head level, but driving that change down to, where change often occurs, at the front lines with employees. So where we have the relationship at the supervisor level, and we want to leverage that positive relationship that employees have with their supervisor, listening to ideas that employees have about how things can improve in the workplace, talking about why they may have answered questions the way they did, the two-way communication, for example. What information are people lacking? It may be different for different people. The word "city" may be interpreted differently by different people. Maybe people want to know what's going on in the budget process. Maybe people want to know what's going on with the business plan in their department. So it may, what's lacking for each employee may be different, but the supervisor's in the best position to get that information and try to make changes in response to employees' ideas. So we're really trying to drive the sponsor multi-level, from the executive level to the department head, to division directors, to the managers and supervisors. That was one of the keys to successful change management, was having multi-sponsor model, including the immediate supervisor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And we really appreciate your coming and giving us this overview. I personally think this is one of the most important things that we hear and kind of take in to just understand how our employees think the city is working and what are their suggestions. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I believe our action is to receive and file, so I will move that. On approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is received.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So we will now go through committee reports. I think let's just go ahead and quickly take community development, and then we have a presentation from the Park Board that is requested, that would be part of the health report, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 15 items for approval on Friday. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 are all land sales. Item 7 is the issue of a bond reissuance for a line of health systems. It's coming in two parts. One portion of it came in this meeting, and one portion is coming in the next meeting. I'll note this is a refinance of existing bonds in partnership with the City of St. Paul and their HRA. A number of individuals came from the Minnesota Nurses Association to participate in the public hearing, and if any of you saw it, you would know it was really great. It was, I think it was just really great to hear what they had to say, to give them an opportunity to make their voices heard and move forward with the bonds. I think it was an example of democracy in action. I think members of the committee were really touched by the entire experience. I'll note that this is not authorizing any additional money for the health system, but refinancing the bonds to lower the interest rate. Item number 8 is a PACE program. I'll also note this is at a chance to grow, where they're going to be putting a solar installation on top of their building, another really great thing that's happening, where a nonprofit's able to use our energy financing tools in order to help move forward on our energy objectives. Item number 9 are the liquor business and gambling licenses. Item 10 is a business license operating condition, as is 11 and 12. Item 13 is an amendment to the parking agreement at 205 Park. Item 14 is accepting deed grants, as well as the county's environmental response fund grants and tax-based revitalization account grants. So there's a huge number of projects in item number 14 in the city of Minneapolis that have received grants. I'll note that many of these grants from the state are under attack right now at the legislature, so we don't know if we will see this pool of funding in the future. Item 15 is a rental dwelling license condition. With that, those are items 1 through 15.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee with its chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for consideration on Friday. First is approving a Public Health Advisory Committee appointment of Raymond Boyle. Second is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services to conduct educational tobacco compliance checks. And the third item is making recommendations on the use of recycled tire products and its passage of a resolution prohibiting the use of city funds for installation or replacement of any facilities or amenities using waste tires, and encouraging others to discontinue the use of waste tire materials as ground cover infill in Minneapolis. And there's also a staff direction associated with that, directing finance staff to work with the public schools and the Park and Recreation Board to identify the cost of the removal of waste tire mulch from existing facilities and identify possible sources of funding that could be used to help and to bring forward a proposal to the council in the future. And I believe that's the item that has brought the Park Board here for a presentation, so I will defer to them.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gordon. And so Superintendent Miller, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Glidden, and councilmembers, for allowing us to come and do a presentation on the waste tire issue. I have with me President Tab and Commissioner Vreeland, who are also here to answer any questions you may have later. But I'd like to introduce Adam Arvidson, who's the Director of Strategic Planning for the Park Board, and John Duesman, who is our Construction Project Manager, who are going to walk through a presentation on the impacts and tire use in our parks, and provide you with some additional information. And all of us are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. And why don't you come up? And I think if you had a presentation, I don't know if the clerk had set that up for you in the system.
Okay, all right, we've got it on us.
Can someone help them, or no? I'm just, we're sort of down an extra person here. Thank you, Ken.
Good morning, councilmembers. As Jane mentioned, my name is John Duesman, Construction Manager for the Park Board. I'm going to walk you through the first part of the presentation here this morning. And I'll just kind of go through the topics that we're going to cover in our presentation. We'll give you an overview of what the Park Board has for synthetic turf fields in its system. We'll talk a little bit about the current science and research that's going on right now related to crumb rubber as field infill material. And then we'll talk about just NPRB field projects and the impacts that there could be in relationship to this topic that we're discussing here with you this morning. So when we look at what the Park Board has for synthetic turf fields and the product that we have with that, we do have eight artificial turf fields that have crumb rubber as that infill material. And as that note up there says, none of these fields feature recycled shoes. It is crumb rubber, which is the use of recycled tire with sand infill material. And the Park Board does not have any playgrounds in its system that uses shredded tires in the play surface itself. But with that, I will say that for accessibility purposes, we do use the product for in-play surfacing, which does have some components of recycled tires in it, but we use that just for accessibility within our playgrounds. And then when we think about benefits to synthetic turf and how it relates to, you know, our usage and the amount of play that we get, you know, there's definitely some benefits to the product itself. It does allow for more playing time while retaining the higher-quality turf. It does allow to be a field be used in conditions when the weather is not, pardon me, when the weather's not favorable. It does also allow for extending the season, getting out earlier in the years, playing later in the year. I think, you know, this year's another great example of kind of what, when the snow's gone, what people can get out and do. And then in general, thinking about costs, maintaining a synthetic turf field versus a natural turf field, there are cost benefits to having synthetic turf field. When we think about, you know, all the research, the studies that have been undertaken and are still going on right now, one of the ones that have come out recently this year is with the Washington State Department of Health, when they just republished a report that said that there are no elevated, pardon me, that there are no elevated risks of cancer among soccer players who play on artificial turf. And from that report, they have a recommendation that says, right now, telling people to continue playing on whatever type of field that you want to play on for soccer, whether it's a natural turf field or whether it's synthetic turf field. There's also another study that's come out this year from the European Chemicals Agency, where they issued this report finding no reason to advise people against playing sports on synthetic turf containing recycled rubber granules as infill material. Those are some of the more current ones that have come out. There are still some that are going on right now. Maybe everybody's aware of the three-year study that the California EPA is still undertaking. They started it back in 2015. We also have the joint effort with the U.S. EPA, Center for Disease Control, and Consumer Product Safety Commission, which, you know, former President Barack Obama set money aside for a collaborative effort there to do research on this very subject. Those studies are still ongoing, but there's been a lot of emphasis put on those studies because they tend to be a little bit more comprehensive than maybe some of the other researcher studies that have been taken. So, you know, I guess, you know, with that being said, with the research that's been done, you know, there is no link right now being made between crumb rubber and user health. I mean, again, it's, from the research that's been done and what's going on, there's just nothing that's come up right now that says that there's this direct concern or link to the problem. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Adam, and he'll run through, you know, the Park Board and how we are kind of planning for the future here.
Good morning, Chair Glidden, councilmembers. As John Duesman mentioned, I'm Adam Arvidson. I'm the Director of Strategic Planning. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the projects that may be affected by the resolution and also kind of how that fits into our capital improvement programming. We're doing a lot of master planning around our neighborhood parks right now. In fact, we're undertaking an effort to master plan every single neighborhood park in the system. That master planning at times identifies places where premier fields may be built. And premier fields, by definition for us, can be made with a variety of different surfaces, but it's really just meant to be a higher-quality playing surface. And typically, in those master planning processes, those surfacing materials have not yet been determined. We don't go into that level of detail in master planning. However, we do recognize, and we do say publicly, that in neighborhood parks, because it's nearly impossible for us to close fields to rest them, which is what you have to do when you have a natural turf premier field, that in neighborhood parks where those are identified, they are likely to be synthetic. We have at the moment two master plan areas complete, the downtown and the south, which is everything south of downtown and east of 35W. And the remainder of the city is ongoing. In fact, north is underway right now, and then we'll do the other two sectors in the coming year and a half or so. In the master plans that we've completed to date, the community engagement process has brought forward plans that show new or expanded that show new or expanded premier fields in three locations. At Powderhorn, a new youth-sized field, a full-size field at Pearl, and then an expansion at Curry Park from a youth to a full-size field. Curry Park is unique among these in that it is actually a project that is funded in our current CIP. In 2018 and 2019, there is NPP twenty funding to do the athletic field work at Curry Park. It's possible that premier fields may be identified in other areas of the city based on the community engagement. So we're out in the community, talking to people, doing a lot of events. And the inclusion of those in the exist, in the master plans that are complete to date, were driven really by the community, the community engagement and the community desire. We expect that we may hear a desire for more of those in other parts of the city. And then also, in addition to that, some of these fields, the eight existing ones that we do have, may need rehabilitation beginning in 2018 and 2019. We actually have some funds allocated in our CIP to begin field rehabilitation in those years and then carrying on through the following years. Some of these fields are reaching the time period in their life where they need some rehabilitation. So I want to state briefly kind of what our concerns are with the resolution that you will consider and what the impacts might be directly on some of our park planning and implementation. First of all, there's no end date on the resolution. And so this really could affect projects going forward in perpetuity, which is obviously a concern to us in the fact that it doesn't link any kind of prohibition to the likely end dates of the findings of these studies that we cited earlier from California or the EPA. So there's no opportunity to reevaluate at some point in the future whether this is a product that has concern or not. And then lastly, because it sort of sets a mandate for the Park Board, we're concerned about the compliance with the concurrent NPP twenty ordinances. I'd like to go through a couple of projects specifically that might be impacted. I mentioned Curry Park here. I'll do this rather quickly. There is funding for the athletic fields in 2018 and 19. The project that is, that is on the docket in our CIP essentially looks at the expansion of that athletic field as well as other amenities, including a gathering plaza splash pad and some other things that were community priorities. We hope to eventually dome this field so that we can provide year-round use in a neighborhood that is extremely dense and has limited park space. This was a master plan that was highly supported by the community when we did our engagement in Cedar Riverside and around the area there. And the impact here would be that if we had to go to an alternative surfacing, which would be invariably more expensive, we would be able to implement far less of the master plan than originally anticipated. And just for reference, I wanted to show that master plan here just so you kind of know what I'm talking about. Since this is a project, it would probably be most directly impacted by this resolution. You can see the large green field on the one side there with the red dashing around it, which would be the indoor dome, and some other associated amenities, playground, splash pad, some court sports. Again, this is the adopted master plan for this park and highly community-supported. The planning that's underway that I noted includes some parks in the north, northeast, southeast, and southwest portions of the city. These may identify premier fields. This is a facility that's highly desired by the community in general. And so we expect that it may come up again. Some of these parks, based on our equity metrics that went into preparing our capital improvement program this year as required by the NPP twenty ordinance, some of these parks already have CIP allocations in 2018, 19, and 20. Even though their master plans aren't complete, we've left a bit of a to-be-determined in our CIP. So presumably, if premier fields were identified in some of the parks that already have allocations, there could be projects additional to Curry that we would want to implement in the short term that would have to do with premier field implementation. And then we feel that this resolution would again limit our ability to implement those community priorities as we go forward. And then lastly, I want to note that because there's no end date on this prohibition, there, any future projects would also be affected. So the premier fields that are identified already or would be identified at Powderhorn and Pearl and other places potentially that are not currently in the CIP, when their numbers come up and they get incorporated into the CIP, again, the increased costs of these projects will continue to be kind of a burden on our cost estimating and our ability to implement projects with the amount of money that we have available to us. I want to note secondarily, as John Duesman mentioned earlier, that we do use poured-in-place rubber for accessibility in almost all of our playgrounds. And though this isn't crumb rubber, it is potentially caught up in the proposed resolution. And so we're concerned about our ability in general to provide accessible playground spaces because there's, there are a few alternative products in that case. So I guess I would end with just sort of a request to you as we evaluate this and as it goes forward for your consideration. We do feel, and this was stated in the letter that we sent previously before the item came before the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee.